How are you doing?
I'm very good.
How are you doing?
Very good.
the Halton City Council. And as usual, I want to welcome those of you who are here in the audience tonight, as well as those who watch over HCTV Channel 7. We carry these council meetings live, and then they're played back at different intervals between now and the next council meeting. So whether you're here in council chambers, or if you're watching on HCTV, thank you for being here, and for tuning in, and being interested in what's going on in Halton City. Our first matter we need to take care of is our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Mayor Pro Tem Bob Hurley.
I'd like to ask Mr. Perkins if he would step forward and do the honors from open all that he serves.
If you will, let's stand for both the invocation and the pledge.
Let us pray. Our Father, we thank you so very much for the privilege of being here, right here at this very moment, dear Lord, just to conduct the business of our city, and to realize the responsibilities that not only the council has, but what we have. And we pray that you would bless each and every council member, dear Lord, and give them clarity of vision and wisdom in the things that are coming up. And we realize there's been difficult times, but dear Lord, there is a learning curve through difficulty. And we pray that through the difficult times we're going through right now, that we might be drawn closer together as a community, because Halton City is still the greatest city anywhere around. We ask your blessings upon each and every one that's here tonight. Forgive us of our many sins, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
In allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
Okay, first of all, I have a presentation to make to Chief Burton, if you'll join me at the speaker's stand. It's not often I get to combine two proclamations into one, but that's what we're doing tonight. From the office of the mayor of the City of Halton City, a proclamation regarding Click It or Ticket, and in a moment you'll have an opportunity to tell us a little bit more about that program, as well as You Drink, You Drive, You Lose. So we're combining the proclamations of these two in a single proclamation. Whereas injuries and death from traffic crashes bring loss and suffering to the citizens of our community, and nearly one-half of traffic-related deaths in Texas are alcohol-related; and whereas the economic cost to Texas citizens from such injuries and death exceed $10.3 billion in the year 2002; and whereas the Click It or Ticket campaign has resulted in dramatic and immediate increase in seatbelt use, and the You Drive, You Drink, You Drive, You Lose campaign includes intensified law enforcement and public education, so that everyone in our community will understand the hazards of drinking and driving. Now, I therefore, Calvin Wyatt, Mayor of the City of Halton City, on behalf of the City Council, join the public and the private sector leaders across Texas in supporting the Click It or Ticket campaigns from November 18th to December 19th, to January 4th, 2004. We urge all residents and visitors to Halton City to buckle up and don't drink and drive. We also commend and support the work of our local law enforcement officers as they are out in force during these mobilizations, so lives can be saved and accident injuries can be reduced. Would you like to address the citizens regarding these two?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the proclamation, and just want to share with the citizens that the Halton City Police Department during the holiday season will be out in force, obviously, to keep you and your families safer in the holiday season. Wear your seatbelt, that's what Click It or Ticket means, and if you drink, you drive, you lose. We all lose, in some very big numbers, as the mayor has already alluded to. So the Halton City Police Department would like to wish all of you a very safe and happy holiday season also.
Thank you, Chief. And I want to make note of one other thing, although it's not listed on the agenda in the area of presentations. Tomorrow is Veterans Day, and I want to ask the veterans who are in this audience, if you would, if you'll stand at this time, we'd like to recognize you and honor you. If you're a veteran, please stand. Words cannot express the appreciation we have to all of our veterans for what they've done for this country, to preserve the freedom that we enjoy. So just a small token of our respect and appreciation to you for the service you've rendered to this country. And I know there are a lot of activities, we'll hear a little bit more about some here in Halton City a little bit later in the meeting, that will focus on the matter of recognizing our veterans. We move now to the consent item, and if you're looking at your agenda, that consists of items number one through nine. We're pulling off item number six for individual discussion and action. We're also adding number seven, number 10, I'm sorry, not seven, number 10 and 13. So we're pulling item number six, and we're adding number 10 and 13 to that. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion. We approve the consent agenda, and also there'll be an amendment made, including a subsidy for the employees' families on the group insurance on item number seven.
Motion, Councilmember Hurley?
That motion should reflect that the, in the charter minutes, that the three-year term did not pass, and will not be presented to the voters. So the charter revision amendment election.
So moved.
And was yours for a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. No discussion on the motion. If you'll register your votes, I'll display them. And that passes by unanimous vote. We move now to item number six, and Mr. Muir, you want to introduce this item for us, please?
Mayor, what you have. Item six is the ordinance for the second reading of the senior tax exemption. I'm not sure exactly who, I don't recall who exactly requested this to be removed. I know there's some additional data and information that was gathered and presented to the council in the workshop, but as far as any other discussion, I'm not sure what the direction is of the council.
Okay, what we have under item number six is to give consideration and our action regarding an ordinance, and amending that ordinance by adding a new section relating to ad valorem tax freeze for residential homestead property owners who are disabled, or 65 years of age or older. Providing this ordinance shall be cumulative of all ordinance, and providing severability cause, and also providing an effective date. I think we're all are familiar with what we're talking about here. Proposition 13, and the recent constitutional amendment election we had statewide has formed the basis for this. And I think what we'll do, we have three citizens who have signed up to speak on this. First, Mr. Ray Eklund, if you will, come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Racklin, and I live at 2532 Oakwood Terrace. Tonight, we're going to visit again about the senior tax freeze that's proposed, and up for a second reading. Tonight, I celebrated a birthday, and I'm one year closer to being 65, but I'm not one minute closer to believing that we're doing the right thing in this particular agenda item. This is about our future. It's about how we're going to take care of the city, and what we're going to do with the loss of an average of $100,000 a year in tax billings. Based on the information that was provided last meeting by the accounting service that we use now, that show $605,000 loss over five years. This amounts to $15 per year, per average, over 65 citizen. I don't believe that we're helping people by insulting them and giving them $1.25 a month, and telling them, in exchange for this $1.25 a month, we're going to have to give up $100,000 worth of funding, which are probably by gentlemen, ladies, what, a fireman? Two firemen? I don't know. These are people that, these are services that we need. The streets, and the firemen, and the police protection, the seniors need it, the citizens need it, the children need it, and we should not give this up for $1.25 a month to one group. If I was to stand at the door this evening and hand out dollar bills, I suspect that most everybody in this audience would have taken it as they came in the door. Unfortunately, I didn't have time to get to the bank, to find out if my experiment would work. I believe most people would take it. And I also believe that most people in this audience don't need it. And they would take it and put it in their pocket, right up until the point where I told them that now we can't provide these other services that we have had in the past. This tax policy is like trying to kill a mosquito with a 12-gauge shotgun. Now, you make a lot of noise with it, it gets a lot of attention, doesn't get the mission accomplished. If we're trying to help the poor, or the needy, if that's what we're trying to do, nobody said that yet, but if that's what we're really trying to do, then we need to target who we're trying to help. Other states, some of this information here, the internet's a wonderful thing, we can search the whole planet and find out stuff about tax freezes, and we find out that other states, Illinois, New Jersey, they have income limits. Now, you can get a tax freeze if you're a senior, if you don't make too much money. I think, I think the way this is written today, we're going to benefit the wealthy homeowner, who happens to be 65 years old, a lot more, a whole lot more than we are the people that really need it down at the bottom. The math on this issue is frightening. This is like compound interest on steroids. First off, we see, I provided some projections, we handed out some stuff, based on, thank you very much, based on the numbers provided here, up through the next five years that were provided here. It gets a lot worse, a whole lot worse, when we go to the form right here that talks about, see, we're talking about 1.3, 1.4 percent, 2.0 percent growth in the number of people. And then suddenly, we jump up to 3 percent growth in the number of seniors per year, and we're going to compound that. At the same time, we expect evaluations to go up, we hope they do. And the assumptions on these papers, on these numbers, this $600,000 says that we have 5 percent growth in our evaluations. Now, I have tax bills in my house that show 20 percent in one year. Now, I didn't like that, but that's the reality of it. Sometimes, if you're doing a good job, and people are moving into Halton City, our evaluations are going to jump. And this is the opportunity for the city to benefit from all this hard work, and infrastructure, and bond money, and those things that we've been working so long and so hard to accomplish. Now, we got the opportunity to maybe put some things in our coffers and take care of everybody, and then this issue, the way it's written, shoots us in the foot.
Mr. Eklund, you have 30 seconds on your five-minute time.
Thank you. I don't want my government, my local government, held hostage by a well-organized, well-funded, vocal group that seeks to cut taxes at all expense, no matter damned the torpedoes. We don't want any taxes, and we don't care who pays the price. That's what's happening. When you go to their website, you'll see what it's all about. You'll see the letters together almost verbatim. And I appreciate your time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Eklund. Our next speaker, Susan Witt. Ms. Witt, if you'll come forward at this time, give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to speak on the subject.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Susan Witt. I live at 2416 Monita Street. I don't know how long five minutes is. I wasn't really prepared to talk tonight, but I felt like maybe I should. I lived in the city, grew up here. I'm 53 years old. I moved away, lived in Grapevine for 30 years, and divorced, and decided to renovate my mother and father's home. I worked on it for two years, and moved here in May, but I've been paying taxes for almost two and a half years. And I was robbed in May. I'm very concerned about my safety in this town. I had some things taken from me where I lived. My street's very dark. I called numerous times the city for a street light, and never got a return call. And finally, I was so involved in my home that I just let it go. And I knew that our city was somewhat a little backwards, but I just knew that I want to be a part of the community, and I want to help. I don't want to sit back and whine, you know, I want to be part of the solution. The tax thing, this is all new to me, but I want to be fair to seniors who can't afford to pay their taxes. I think there should be a criteria set up to where if they need help, they should get it. And there are some seniors who planned well for their future, I'm hoping I'm doing the same thing, that won't need this kind of help. But I do want to be fair to all concerned, but I also want to see the city improve. I want to see all of us come together and start working together, and let's, you know, quit the mouthing, former council members. I'm new here, and I've heard a lot, and it's just negative things. And I think the pastor said it best, we need clarity, we need a vision. And please, let's work together, have that vision, have that clarity, and I'll do all I can as a new resident, and I'd like a safer Halton City, and I'd like to see changes for the positive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Witt. Mr. Williams, Councilmember Williams?
Yes, I know we've got a new city manager at this time, and I'm sure he's fixing to address Mrs. Witt's concern about her street light, and find out that she will be called back if she's called again, right?
We've gone farther than that, we've already been working on it. I just lost Ms. Witt's number and name. Monita, is that what you said? Okay. Mr. Fain will be getting with you at the break to discuss that. There's criteria that's done with that, but...
I'll find it, Mr. Fain did, because that's in the works there.
Okay.
My point was, it just took such a long...
Well, and I apologize for that. I know you called my office at least once, and I remember the street, that's all I, and I may find the message one of these days. I've misplaced it, though. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Williams, anything further?
No, sir, I knew he would handle that.
Our third and final speaker on the subject, Mr. Jack Lewis. Mr. Lewis, if you'll come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Jack Lewis, I live at 4600 Savelle, here in Halton City. I've lived here since 64, and as most of you know, I would first want to thank Mr. Williams and Mr. Hurley, and Mrs. Branson, Mr. Sutton, for voting on the first reading, to freeze the taxes for the elderly and the disabled. We have a lot in this city, and I understand the charts. I apologize, Mr. H. Ross probed these charts, but man, the fact is, the people of Texas have spoken, 81 percent statewide voted in this last election to give this freeze, which I might add, it is not reducing taxes, it's not reducing revenue, in fact, it's not doing anything for the citizens, for senior citizens and the disabled, but freezing it, just like the school taxes are, freezing it, so that the senior citizens can stay in their homes longer. They need to plan their medical, their insurance, their expenses, without having taxes go up every year. Now, this rhetoric about the taxes and what it's going to cost the city, we've heard figures, we went through the Silverhead Legislature with this, they made it their number-one resolution. It went to the state, they passed it by 81 percent, and here in the Halton City, it passed citywide by over 92 percent, and some of the precincts went as high as almost 96 percent for this. So we appreciate the council passing this on the first reading, and hope we will continue to be positive and approve this on second reading. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Councilmember Williams?
Just a minute, Mr. Lewis, I have a question for you, if you don't mind. I've heard a comment from you, and Mr. Garcia was here a couple of weeks ago. Y'all are saying that by freezing these taxes, it will keep people from having to move out of their house. Can you explain that to me?
Yes, back in the early stages, when we introduced a resolution to the northeast Tarrant County Senior Leadership Group in Colliville, and the task they took on was, what can we do to keep seniors in their home longer? More and more seniors are being pressured through medical expense, through insurance, through taxes, through whatever, actually having to go into nursing homes sooner because of the economics. Well, on the economics, and the Silverhead Legislature discussed this at length, along with the House. In fact, I was down there during the committee hearings, and I forget all the numbers, but there's a big concern in Texas on the cost of our nursing homes. letters together almost verbatim, right? And I appreciate your time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Eklund. Our next speaker, Susan Witt. Ms. Witt, if you'll come forward at this time, give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to speak on the subject.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Susan Witt. I live at 2416 Monita Street. Um, I don't know how long five minutes is, I wasn't really prepared to talk tonight, but I felt like maybe I should. Um, I lived in the city, grew up here, um, I'm 53 years old. I moved away, um, lived in Grapevine for 30 years, and divorced, and decided to renovate my mother and father's home. Uh, worked on it for two years, and moved here in May, and, but I've been paying taxes for almost two and a half years. And, um, I was robbed in May, um, I'm very concerned about my safety in this town. Um, I had, um, some things, um, taken from me where I live. My street's very dark, um, I called numerous times the city for a street light, and, um, never got a return call, and, uh, finally, I was so involved in my home that I just let it go. And, uh, I knew that our city was somewhat a little backwards, but I just knew that I wanna be a part of the community, and I wanna help. I don't wanna sit back and whine, you know, I wanna be part of the solution. Uh, the tax thing, this is all new to me, but, uh, I wanna be fair to seniors who, um, can't afford to pay their taxes, I think there should be a criteria set up to where if they need help, they should get it. And there are some seniors who planned well for their future, I'm hoping I'm doing the same thing, that won't need this kind of help. And, uh, but I do wanna be fair to all concerned, but I also wanna see the city improve, I wanna see, um, all of us come together and start working together, and let's, uh, you know, quit the mouthing, uh, former council members, I'm new here, and I've heard a lot, and it's just negative things, and I think the pastor said it best, we need clarity, we need a vision, and please, let's work together, have that vision, have that clarity, and I'll do all I can as a new resident, and I'd like a safer Holton City, and, uh, I'd like to see changes for the positive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Witt. Mr. Williams, Councilmember Williams?
Yes, uh, I know we've got a new city manager at this time, and I'm sure he's fixing to address Mrs. Witt's concern about her street light and find out that, uh, she will be called back if she's called again, right?
Uh, we've gone farther than that, we've already been working on it. I just lost Ms. Witt's number and name. Uh, Monita, is that what you said? Okay. Mr. Fain will be getting with you at the break to, uh, discuss that. There's, there's, there's criteria that's, that's done with that, but, uh...
I'll find it, Mr. Fain did.
Okay.
Because, you know, that's in the works there.
Okay.
I, I, my point was, it just took such a long...
Well, and I, and I apologize for that. I know you called my office at least once, and, and I, I remember the street, that's all I, and I, I may find the message one of these days, I, I've misplaced it, though, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Williams, anything further?
No, sir, I knew he would handle that.
Our third and final speaker on the subject, Mr. Jack Lewis. Uh, Mr. Lewis, if you'll come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm Jack Lewis, I live at 4600 Savelle, here in Holton City. I lived here since 64, and as most of you know, I first wanna thank Mr. Williams and Mr. Hurley, and, uh, Mrs. Branson, Mr. Sutton, for voting on the first reading, to freeze the taxes for the elderly and the disabled. We have a lot in this city, and, uh, understand the, uh, the charts, I apologize, Mr. H. Ross, uh, Perot, these charts, but man, the fact is, the people of Texas has spoken, 81 percent statewide voted in this, uh, last election to give this, uh, freeze, which I might add, it is not reducing taxes, it's not reducing revenue, in fact, it's not doing anything for the citizens, for senior citizens and the disabled, but freezing it, just like the school taxes are, freezing it so that the senior citizens can stay in their homes longer. They need to plan their medical, their insurance, their expenses, without having taxes go up every year. Now, this rhetoric about the, uh, the taxes and what it's gonna cost the city, we've heard figures, we went through the Silverhead Legislature with this, they made it their number-one resolution. It went to the state, they passed it by 81 percent, and here in the Holton City, it passed citywide by over 92 percent, and some of the precincts went as high as almost 96 percent for this. So, we appreciate the council passing this on the first reading, and hope we will continue to be positive and, uh, approve this on second reading. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Uh, Councilmember Williams?
Just a minute, Mr. Lewis, I have a question for you, if you don't mind. I've heard a comment from you and, uh, Mr. Garcia, that was here a couple of weeks ago, uh, y'all are saying that by freezing these taxes, it will keep people from having to move out of their house, can you explain that to me?
Yes, back in the early stages, when we introduced a resolution to the Northeast Tarrant County, uh, Senior Leadership Group in Collyville, and the task they took on was what can we do to keep seniors in their home longer? More and more seniors are being pressured through medical expense, through insurance, through taxes, through whatever, actually having to go into, uh, nursing homes sooner because of the economics. Well, on the economics, and the Silverhead Legislature discussed this at length along with the, the House, in fact, I was down there during the committee hearings, and I forget all the numbers, but there's a big concern in Texas on the cost of our nursing homes all over the state, assisted living centers, and how can we keep people in their homes? And this came up. So, they adopted the resolution up here at the Northeast Senior Leadership Group, they gave it to Mr. Garcia and others, I got off the, uh, Silverhead Legislature in July of last year, Mr. Garcia, who spoke on this and spoke very eloquent on the subject, he carried it, and we were down there the first session, and seniors from all over Texas, they, they came to Austin, okay? And it was agreed on, that maybe this is one small way, because it's not gonna be a lot of money, but every little bit helps. So, it went from there, went from a molehill to a mountain, if you will, and yet, it doesn't mean, just like Ray said, it doesn't mean that much money, so it's not a big issue to the cities all over Texas and to the counties, because this, in effect, well, uh, this Resolution 13 that they passed, will in essence freeze the tax on the other four taxing entities. The schools are already frozen, and I tell you, I got my bill the other day, and it's nice to see, I'm 65 and older, it's nice to see, they got five taxing entities out there. Okay, every one of them's had an increase, including the city, okay, but it's frozen where the school is, and it's the same as it was last year. So, it's just a little bit, and the seniors, uh, they're not begging for anything, I went to a, uh, meeting in Collyville yesterday where they're honoring veterans, and those people, boy, I tell you, they're wanting a dry eye in there, when these people get up and talked about their country, how they paid their taxes, so it's just a little effort, and it's not for me, I mean, uh, and I hope that y'all will not use your personal feelings about who and what we support for your judgment, we appreciate those that have passed it. But it's a small amount for you, for the city, as far as the cap, in future years, and someone mentioned 600,000, we don't know what the future holds as far as taxes, how much they go, they may go down, and this council has the option of lowering them, I think that's in the ordinance. So, uh, it's a small amount, but keeping them in their home, every little bit helps, and, uh, I can't prove to you that how many people it's gonna keep out of the nursing home, but anything we can do to help our seniors to stay in their homes longer, that was the theme, is what it's all about.
Did that answer your question?
Well, I've got one that...
Okay, please.
I, I appreciate your knowledge on this, I know you've done a lot of studying and stuff. Uh, one other question, and I think Mr. Eklund, one, one item of area he might've had in his, I didn't see anything where it allowed for anyone to pass away, so that would, uh, make those numbers a little bit higher than what they are. Uh, what are, since you were with the Silverhead Legislature, what would your feelings be toward raising the exemption all the way to 100,000, or just making everybody that's over 65 exempted?
Okay, I wanna thank you for that, uh, Councilmember Fowler mentioned this to me at the last meeting, and I personally, uh, it does not matter, except, uh, rather than, the freezing does not do one thing for seniors today, it's still, it's just frozen, they don't lower it. But I would be for raising the exemption, this last exemption that the council approved, no, I'm taking that back, they did not approve, and the people got a petition, had to, had to get to it, in fact, I helped in that. And, uh, the evaluation was raised from 40 to 50,000, and that helped a little bit, but what happened, and I got my notice on that, too, they raised the evaluation almost identical, we raised it 10,000, the evaluation on my property went up 7,000, so in reality, I'll be paying taxes on just 3,000. So, basically wiped that out, so I would be for what you're talking about, maybe raising it Collyville, and I know that's apples to oranges, so to speak, but, uh, 75,000, you mentioned 100,000 possibly raising the homestead, that might would, uh, help Mr. Eklund here on the wealthy, you know, we hear people that's, you know, millionaires, they're not worried about an exemption, but these people on fixed incomes with 450 and 500 dollars a month, that might be a good idea to raise the homestead exemption to say 75,000, look at the average prices of homes, and that would help those who are in the, uh, low part, so it sound like it might be a good idea.
Okay, one last question, uh, since this brought up, brought merit in the Star Telegram, I think put article in the, this last weekend's paper, Saturday or so, about Bedford, and, uh, saying that this might, and, and my first instinct on this was, we're doing it too quick, we got till next October to take care of this, and my suggestion was wait and, uh, see what Austin does before we jump out there too quick, but, uh, uh, Ms. Branson and some of the other members were wanting to get it done, so I didn't oppose it, now, I've had a, a multitude of callers over the last weekend call and email me, uh, they're wanting to put it to a vote. I think it'd be a moot point, but would you have, would you have a problem with putting it to the ballot?
No, in fact, we had, we put it to the ballot here on September 13th, and it passed by 81 percent, 92, as I said, here in Holton City. Now, I will say, I will not call any kind of election that's not necessary, they cost too much, I understand we're looking at one tonight, an election cost, we don't need all these elections. Now, four of you have already agreed to do this, and there's nothing changed, we talk about discussing it numbers, we listen to the governor, in fact, I was down there when he signed that bill, we listen to the Silverhead Legislature, we listen to the House, to the Senate, Jane Nelson carried it in the Senate, so personally, we are making a mountain out of a molehill, waiting, no, it will not take effect until January the first, 2004, so it's no big deal. So, this is, uh, it remind me of one of these deals on the charter election, that we're proposing to, uh, uh, lower your salaries from $10 a meeting to zero, that is ridiculous for us to have an election about $10, when we got millions, and tonight, we're talking about zero, so I don't see any need, now, you're right, it does not take effect until 2004. There's no big hurry from that standpoint, but the feeling of the Northeast Senior Leadership Group and Bedford, a lot of the cities have already proved it, you're looking every day in Tarrant County, the county commissioners are gonna take it up, this thing has been studied, and it's just like at the state level, they'll spend hours on a $10 issue, and then flip a coin, they'll spend 50 million and won't even question it. So, I think that's what we're doing, so I would hope that you should get this behind you, approve it, it's not gonna affect the budget, it's not gonna help the seniors. Now, this deal you were talking about and raising the homestead exemption might be a good idea, even if this is frozen, because the freezing of the taxes is not gonna help one penny, it's not gonna lower their taxes one penny, but if you raise the homestead exemption, it will help a little bit.
We might bring this to an end, maybe you and I could have a cup of coffee one day this week, and...
I'd like to...
Because I think we're gonna get here...
If you don't pass this, we need two cups of coffee, so it's, uh, 'cause you already, oh, no, did you vote on it the last time?
Yeah.
Okay, you...
You thanked me a while ago.
Oh, okay, well, okay.
First time you thanked me in five and a half years.
My memory is short, I'm over 65, I need a homestead exemption.
Thank you for your, thank you for your knowledge on that, Mr. Lewis.
I don't, I don't need it.
Mr. Lewis, uh, Councilmember Fowler has his light on, and, uh, Councilmember Fowler, before I recognize you, ladies and gentlemen, I came here tonight with, uh, a migraine headache, and with back spasms, and I thought I could, uh, uh, carry that through the meeting, and I'm not gonna be able to, I'm gonna have to go to the House. And, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Hurley, if you will, uh, if you'll come to, uh, uh, to the, uh, mayor's spot and, uh, finish this meeting, and, uh, I apologize, I probably should've stayed home to begin with, but, uh...
Will you be able to drive home okay? Do, you, you need a ride home, or are you okay?
I'll, I'll, I'll be able to, to get to the House.
Make sure you're okay.
Uh, the meeting will be in good, uh, good hands with, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Hurley.
Thank you.
But, but, but...
We don't know how early it's gonna be, but we'll go.
Before we get back to business, Corporal Oaks, can you turn down the thermostat? All I'm seeing is a bunch of fans going. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Fowler.
Thank you, thank you. Mayor Pro Tim, uh, I guess to preface this, we have to, you, you know, you have to look at a bunch of different things, I have two questions, one for Mr. Lewis, and then one also for Mr. Eklund. Uh, you know, we sit up here, and we have to come across, and we, we can't be anti-school, or we can't appear to be anti-school, because we're not, we can't be anti-senior citizen, because we're not, but we also have to be very, very prudent in what we look at in these things, and, and you'd made a comment, Mr. Lewis, and not trying to refute with you, but we're looking at, Mr. Eklund, assuming that these are correct, and these are provided by the city, we're looking at about a 15 percent tax revenue loss, uh, next year, and then in five years, we're looking at about 46 to, uh, 46.81, so 47 percent tax loss, uh, you know, I, I'm with you, I think it's, it's crucial that we do everything we can to help seniors, because we have an aging community, uh, not just Holton City, but we have a lot of baby boomers, and we have a lot more people coming into the senior community than we do, uh, I guess, younger people nowadays.
Yeah, we're all getting older.
Yes, sir, so I think that, I think that you're right, that's something that we definitely need to look at and do what we can, but you have to look at the cost and benefit of, of each thing that we vote on, and each thing that we do, and how it affects the entire, the entire program, uh, what were we trying to go? Are we doing seniors justice by saving them $1.25 a month, and yet losing, say, two policemen or two firemen that provide services not only to the seniors, but to all, you know, to all people? Uh, we have to look at, is it, is it important to save that, you know, that amount of money for, for all seniors, or is there maybe, like we'd spoken earlier, is there criteria that some seniors may not need the, you know, the $15 a month? And I think it's something we might be a little premature in jumping into, uh, in doing so. My question for you would be, you'd previously mentioned the, the county and the hospital district, and the, the county school district, and, and Holton City's taxes, uh, percentage wise, what would your school taxes be, even though they're frozen, in comparison to the other four entities?
I can't speak for the schools.
Would you say it's close to 50/50, though?
No, now, you've got the charts, and you're looking at figures, and you're playing on people's...
Well, no, what I'm saying, Mr. Lewis...
And you have a question, did you want an answer?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, the answer on this, we, there's $1.25 in your charts, we're not asking the $1.25 for the seniors, we're asking that it be capped, that's been discussed here, you've, you've made those same remarks about cutting policemen, cutting the library, that's as old as Washington. We are not asking to cut anything, the senior citizens of this country have defended this country, they have built this country, they built Holton City, some of you are getting close to it, so we're not talking about cutting policemen, cutting firemen, and asking for welfare, we're saying to cap the tax on their homes, that they may stay in their homes longer, and again, it's not costing the $1.25 a month as, as your charts, or whoever says it, it's not costing one penny, it is freezing it at the same level. Now, you say, well, it's gonna cost 600,000, $1.25 a month, that is a bunch of bull, you don't know, you can't take away something, you have it given.
Mr. Lewis, all...
These taxes are not being given to anyone.
All I'm asking is, school district's taxes, let's say, versus the county hospital district and the other four.
Yeah.
If you look at tax bill after tax bill through the city, you're looking at somewhere around, close to a 50/50, so Holton City, the county school dis, or the county hospital district, the county taxes, and what's the other entity that's in there?
Tarrant County Junior College.
And the county college, those four put together are virtually half of your tax bill, and the other half is the school district, so, yes, sir, it is frozen, but all I'm trying to do is, I'm not trying to be argumentative, I think we do need to do things for seniors, I'm not denying that at all, but all I'm saying is, are we doing them justice when we're only getting, let's say, uh, your tax bill's what, is it less than $100?
No, it's a lot more than, no, for Holton City, it is less than 100.
Okay, it's less than 100, but the school taxes are probably 600.
It's $488 frozen for the last three, I remember that figure, because it's been frozen for the last three years. Now, if you wanted to do the senior citizens a favor, as you mentioned, and you want to, you abstained the last time, if you abstained the late, this time, and the two that voted for it, or the four that voted for it, it's a muted issue, we can go on, so I'm not for belaboring the point, you either for it or against it, you can't be both.
Okay, well, what I'm asking is, is not to be argumentative, like I said previously...
We're not arguing, we're just discussing.
All I'm, all I'm saying is that this, we're asking for help for the seniors, and you're saying the school taxes are frozen at almost 400 percent higher than the city taxes, and yet, the seniors still require fire protection, police protection, water and sewer services...
Water and sewer, we require streets.
And we can't freeze, we can't freeze our employees' benefits, we can't, we can't freeze...
Y'all did this year.
We, no, sir, we gave it...
You didn't give them a raise.
Yes, sir, we did.
You give them a bonus, you sold property, it's like a garage sale, sold property, and come up with $260,000, and according to the paper, and this is good, but we're not talking about, uh, benefits, if it's gonna cost a fireman or policeman, let's don't do it, but I don't see how it can cost...
That's what we're talking about, though.
I don't see, no, we're not, we're talking about the freezing, there's a difference in freezing and raising it.
Okay.
So, that's what we're talking about, it's just like your expenses in your business, when they get to a certain level, you either have to decrease your, you have to increase your income or decrease your expenses, well, seniors cannot call Washington and say, increase my social security, because these pills are costing $8 a pill, so they have to do something, and we're, that's why we're speaking up for them on their taxes.
Okay.
Now, they, I think they've paid their fair share. Now, if you'd rather go the homestead exemption route, whatever, it's up to y'all, I'm just saying the figures and the facts, we need to keep it on target and look at reality, where, I don't care what the papers say, I don't care what all of us say, the fact is, our seniors need help.
Mr. Lewis, excuse me, I think I've got another, another council member that has a question for you.
Okay, sir.
Prince. You had your light on?
I think Mr. Sutton had his on.
Okay, go ahead, you're first.
Oh, I'm first, okay, well, I was just gonna ask Mr. Mayor, if we could have, we had another chart prepared this evening that compares both sides of the equation, um, how the other taxes go up and other revenues come in as compared to this, and I was wondering if, um, we could have the individual that prepared this come talk about this chart, would that be okay?
Bridget.
Thanks.
Uh, Bridget, our interim finance director, Bridget Nichols, please.
Are y'all through with me? I would like, I tell you, talk about revenue, the Economic Development Director, I thought that's who we should call in on, he had a report that sounded like our city was gonna boom, now, this is new revenue, if what the, uh, Economic Development Director, you were the finance people, okay, the Economic Development Director, Bell Nap is booming, we, he listed, where is he tonight, several, things are looking good, new revenue, so let's talk about this.
If you'll let Bridget explain this chart to us, please, sir.
Thank you. The, the second chart that we prepared, we looked at, um, the first chart we prepared was an estimate of the projection of what the, um, it's not really a loss, but the loss potential for property taxes over the next five years, if we freeze the property taxes for seniors and disabled persons for the next tax year, um, and we had projected over a five-year period that the cumulative reduction in the revenue, assuming that appraisal values increase 5 percent per year and the rate stays the same, would be approximately $600,000. Um, the second chart we looked at, we looked at what happens to the rest of the tax base using the exact same model of a 5 percent increase over the five years, and what we determined was that that $600,000 represented about 1.4 percent of the total revenue from property taxes that the city takes in. Are there any additional questions relating to that?
Councilman Sutton, did you have a question?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor President. Uh, I just had a question for Mr. Lewis, real quickly, uh, I understand that whenever this was being debated in Austin, that a lot of Councilmember Fowler's objections were raised and, and talked about, for instance, what would happen to the decrease in revenue over time for cities, and I understand that there was quite a bit of, uh, good discussion on that, and yet, knowing that, they went ahead and voted for that because they felt it was a fiscally prudent thing to do for the seniors, because the net effect would be that it would help seniors stay longer in homes and reduce the healthcare costs, so in the big picture view of things, it would actually help the economy versus hurt, is, is that true, is what I'm saying?
That was discussed in the, in the House especially, I was down there when this committee just discussed that, they went into detail, we've listened to all, but I wanna comment on two words that our finance, interim finance director mentioned, on that 600 dollar, and this is probably an answer to your question, Trey, is the, uh, the two words, assuming, assuming, and our projections based on the past, is that correct? These are words that are, don't mean anything in this issue, we're gonna assume something's gonna happen, only God knows what's gonna happen. Projecting, you can take figures and come up with all kind of chart, H. Ross Perot proved that, man, he picked, he put charts all over the place, all over the nation, you could prove anything, but you're right, they discussed this, and, uh, taking in all these assumptions and projections from the finance people in Austin and the other cities, in fact, here's what, here's what we, our original... In fact, here's what the, here's what we, our original proposition was, to freeze it, just like the schools at the, at the state level, where every taxing entity wouldn't have to go through this because every finance director in the state of Texas will come up with these scenarios, assumptions, projections, based on not doing it. When we're talking about freezing it, not decreasing revenue. So I think, again, we're making a mountain out of a mold hill, and you're right. The whole point was keep seniors in their, uh, in their homes longer. And these people that made these studies in Austin and, and talked about it, they had the figures. There wasn't assumptions on where we are today regarding people having to go to nursing homes because of the economic situation. And your home is one of, that's your last stand. As you get older, you have your home paid for. And I'll tell you what, I do remember this about my tax bill. My taxes this year, this year, you mentioned the, the school, and you're right, it's high and it's frozen high. Maybe we oughta try to get it down. I wish y'all would help us. Okay. The per-month costs, if I divided the total tax bill by twelve, is just about three to four dollars more than my house payments were when I moved to nineteen sixty-four over here. So these are the kind of things we're talking about. We're still paying taxes. But our taxes are as much as our house payment was in nineteen sixty-four, when you and I were down in the O. So that's where we are. So it's, uh, did that, uh, have a question?
I hate to interrupt you, but we have a long agenda tonight, and I think we're belaboring this issue to the point that...
I do, too. Bye. I'm calling.
I, I've got a question for you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Lewis, I got a question for you.
Ms. Branson?
It's, it's gonna be real quick, though.
Okay, I'll give you a quick answer.
You were on the council here in Halton City, and you were the mayor here.
I don't remember. It's been a long time now.
When, when you were presented a budget, were those predictions on, uh, predictions and assumptions? And what had, is that what y'all went by when you got a budget? Because you really didn't know what you were, I mean, that were just assuming, like what Bridget said a while ago, that you were mentioning these words.
Uh-huh.
I mean, they were on assumption and predictions, and that's the way we budget around here, isn't it?
Pat Moffett was our city manager for, what, twenty-four years, and he did a good job. In fact, he looked at where we were today, and they usually came up with an increase of ten percent automatically. Back then, inflation was around, it went up as high as eighteen percent. Today, we have an inflation rate of less than about two percent. So he used current, uh, fixed absolute figures. He didn't use assumptions and projections. Now, in his mind...
You said he inflated it ten percent. So he was assuming, he was, he was hitting, hitting for a home run there, hoping that we'd get ten percent twenty-four years ago.
Hoping we get ten percent inflation.
That's what you said.
Well, I'm, I'll take that back. Let me explain it to you. No, we never hoped for ten percent inflation. We were having ten percent inflation back then, and that's a factor. But when he planned his budget, he used absolutes, like the revenue coming in based on this year. Now...
That's why we had a budget shortfall this la- this past fiscal year, because we used last, the year before, and our sales tax didn't come in. So you're, you're assuming that those dollars are gonna come in, but you're not for sure. So that, that assumption that you said a while ago, we do assume when we make budgets around here, and this is a budgeted item.
In that respect, you, you got to assume, in fact, I have to assume that I'm gonna be able to walk back to my chair. But it's sort of absolute, too. And somebody wants me to walk back to my chair, and I don't blame the mayor pro tem for saying we belabored the point enough, so, uh...
I think we've just about beat it to death.
You have to come to the mic. Last question from the other...
Councilman Branson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I have, I have one question for the attorney, and then I'm in line for a motion if you're ready. Okay. Um, I've heard Mr. Williams and some others mention they want to see what's going to go on in Austin. And I just want to ask the attorney if he's aware of anything going on in Austin that has to do with the tax, uh, tax fees for the seniors and disabled.
No, I am not.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, are you in line for a motion now?
Chair's in line for a motion.
All right.
I, I, I promise I'll make it, I promise I'll make it quick, Mr. Hurley.
Chair recognizes Mr. Fowler for one question, quick.
Mr. Eckland, on this, you'd taken the time to, to go through this. Can you just explain briefly what this, this is, so that there's no confusion on this document on the...
Yes, Councilman, I'd be happy to. That came directly from the handout that the, the, uh, people gave us last time about the projections. We took the numbers right here, and, uh, if you have the, the really fancy one, it has the numbers on there, and then we did the math about it to, to come up with those numbers. No, that's all right.
But your conclusion, just, I just...
It came right exactly off of these numbers.
Okay, but your conclusion would be what?
Well, the numbers are, the, the, the projected shortfall, you know, when money falls out of your pocket, it's a revenue loss, whether you lost it or what you ever did with it. Uh, those are monies we're not gonna get, okay? These are monies that they say we're not gonna get. The first year, we're not gonna get thirty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars. The next year, we're not gonna get seventy-five thousand, eight hundred, uh, excuse me, six hundred and twenty-nine. The next year, we're not gonna get a hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and so on. And then, it gets into the ugly part over here, right?
Okay.
It gets into the three percent where it really goes off the map.
Well, not...
And we didn't, we didn't take the time to draw the chart all the way up as high as we could've, right? But the truth of the matter is, it gets bad, and then it gets worse, okay? Now, these are losses of income, okay? Now, how you look at it, it's money that you could've had in your pocket, that you should've had in your pocket. This is an issue that the city needs to take the time to sit down, hash out, go in the back room. This thing just passed in Austin, what, a month ago, two months ago? You guys got the wild hair to come in here and passages like that. You know what? We spent how many years trying to get the, uh, car lot thing passed? If I forgot how to do that.
I know you bring that in.
Well, I just, I was a good example of how long it takes to get something through government, except when it's pushed and yelled and so, and people telling you things that you're not losing money, when we all know we are losing money, okay? We are gonna lose funds out of this thing, and we need to be fair about it. We need to make sure we help who we think we're helping, okay? The guy that lives in a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house down here, okay? Living on a very fat CEO retirement check that happens to live in Halton City does not need your fifteen dollars, okay? He doesn't need any of these funds, okay? Yet, the young family who's coming up is gonna continue to bear the burden of this mistake simply because this group of people is all excited about this thing. You need to go down, sit down, put this back in committee, and hash it out, okay? And this is a serious issue, and I know we got a couple of people that are kind of new to politics here, right? And they're being directed from the way far right, okay? But if you don't pay your people, they're gonna leave. If you don't take care of your funding, we won't have a city to operate in, in a very few years. This thing is gonna cost us a lot of money. I love charts and graphs. I love some money. I lo- I, I enjoy this stuff. It doesn't lie. It doesn't lie.
I'd ask a short question.
Uh, you know...
Let's, let's have a little order and dignity in here, please.
Okay.
Have you made your point?
No, I can stand up here another twenty-five minutes like Mr. Lewis, and I can explain to you what all this is about.
We have a motion before the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I move that we pass ordinance number zero-two-zero-zero-three-oh-three-five-oh-one.
Have a motion to have second. Mr. Sutton?
Yes, yes, Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, that is for a second.
Please register your votes.
Got a question.
Discussion.
I've got a question.
Yes.
I was wondering if you'd, uh, accept a substitute motion.
I'm not very knowledgeable about substitute motions. I think we have to dispose of the first one before we can do a substitute motion.
No, you gotta go substitute first. I got a good lesson in them.
I'll entertain a substitute motion.
I'd have to have a second one first, though. Well, I have to make the motion first. I'd like to make a motion that we table this, uh, till the first meeting in January, have a cooling down period, let both sides get together and talk. Uh, like we said, it's October of oh-four before this even happens. And I, you know, I want it on there just as bad as anybody does. Uh, I voted for it last time, but I think with the, uh, multitude of phone calls and emails that I got, it would be only fair to the people that called me and contacted me, uh, in good favor. So my substitute motion would be to, to table it till the first meeting in January and bring it back up at that time. That would still give us ten months.
All right, I have a substitute motion on Florida. I'll have a second on a substitute motion. Councilman Everett?
Mayor, Mayor, I'll second the substitute motion.
Have a motion and a second on a substitute motion. Chair recognizes Mr. Fowler.
I just, real quick question. Make sure that, uh, there's a timeframe on this. Mr. Olson is, now, you said that this would not even, there's still ten months or twelve months until this, this has to be decided? Is that, I mean, I just want to make sure we're correct in that, that we still have a, a ten-month period or, or a future council, say, in May, they could work on it next, next budget session? Is that correct?
That's correct. What you're voting on tonight will affect the tax rate and the taxes that Halton City imposes effective October first, two thousand and four.
Two thousand and four?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Wayne, let me, is there a... We had the first reading and approval last meeting. Is there a particular timeframe that the second reading must happen before we start this process over again?
No, if the council wants to table this till the first meeting in January, we can vote on the ordinance on second reading at that meeting in January.
Okay. And once this, if it is approved, there is no going back, right? There's no rescinding it?
That's, that's correct. The way the law currently reads, once this is approved, it cannot be repealed.
Now, can it be repealed prior to October one of two thousand and four?
No.
Once it's passed, it's done.
Once this ordinance is adopted on second reading, it will take effect.
Okay. Thank you.
To dispose of the substitute motion, we have a, a substitute motion and a second. We'll call for a vote on a substitute motion.
This, this is the table until January.
Table the second reading until January.
I have a question.
Okay, question.
Last time we did this, we voted on if we were gonna vote on the substitute motion before we voted on the substitute.
Yeah, let's do that first.
That's right.
Yeah. I thought that's what we were doing.
This, we're voting on a substitute motion, right?
We're voting on whether to take the substitute, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. You vote to whether you want to take the substitute motion, and then you come back and vote on it.
Okay.
I know it doesn't sound real.
This is what the attorney advised me. Substitute motion.
We're voting on the actual substitute motion? We're voting on the actual substitute motion?
Right.
Is that...
Councilmember Williams, is that different than what the mayor implemented last time?
I've got it, Mr. Lewis. Uh, the last cup... Are we on the line?
Let's, let's get this cleared up first.
The, uh, I learnt this from my colleagues. I, I'd never heard of it in the five years I'd been up here. And, uh, the way I understood it, the way it was described to me, if a substitute motion is made and second, then the body votes on whether or not to accept the substitute motion for a vote, which I thought was, doesn't make a lot of sense, but it's, it's kind of like you vote on whether you're gonna vote.
I'm gonna defer to that. Let me clarify for the record. I mean, the city council has not adopted any formal rules of procedure for purposes of voting on motions. So, um, we defer to the chair to determine what procedure will be utilized. And, and I'm gonna have to defer to the city secretary and, and councilmember Williams, who are recalling that the last time we did this, uh, we voted as councilmember Williams, uh, is indicating now that we will vote on whether or not to vote on the substitute motion.
I, I might point out that if you make a motion on this and it's second, and it fails, I mean, it passes, that it's not a very good chance that it's gonna fail when you vote on it. Because I can't see somebody voting someone one way and then turn around and voting the other way once they vote to accept it.
So, did, did you follow that? The, if you follow that procedure, then the vote of the council would be whether or not to accept the substitute motion?
The council, the chair will call for a vote on whether or not to accept the substitute motion. Would you cast your votes? All right, the motion passes to accept the substitute motion for a vote.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
For, for a vote?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
I'd like to request one thing for the rest of the evening, and we have a gentleman here that's vision impaired, and he's not privy to who votes how. So if we could read the, if it wouldn't be too much trouble for the chair to do that, to read off the votes for him.
Be happy to.
Thank you. So now, we voting on the subs- I made it substitute...
Now, we're, now, we're gonna vote on a substitute motion.
To table it until...
To either table it, uh, what was your, what was your motion?
Table the second reading until the first meeting in January.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Motion carries, that's five to two, with, uh, councilmember Sutton and Branson voting no.
I'd like to point out that you're not voting for Calvin White, that you're voting for Mr. Hurley.
I'm voting as, uh, councilmember...
You can't run down there and vote.
Yes, sir.
The question, not on the first reading, I'm going back. You mentioned something about we were mayor. The first reading, it was passed four to nothing. Two councilmen were absent. They, they did not vote on it. How can they vote, and, and the city attorney may want to answer this, how can they vote on the substitute motion? And how can the mayor pro tem, the councilman who gave up his seat, become mayor pro tem, vote on it?
Both of those are legal, uh, Mr. Lewis, for the, for the mayor pro tem to vote. He is still a council member. He counts towards a quorum. He also is, does not give up his right to vote, although he's acting as the, as the presiding officer.
Thank you. And this is my opinion on legal. Things can be legal but wrong, and this is wrong.
Mr. Lewis, you asked for our attorney's opinion. Councilmember Williams?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd just like to point out, we haven't taken anything away from anybody. We just postponed it until the meeting in, uh, January. We're, we have a cooling down period, so... Uh, I don't think anybody's really voted against anything. I think they just voted to table it. And we will be tabling the second reading. We, we're not tabling it all together.
This will be, this will be coming back up on the January agenda.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes item six. We have some speaker's request cards from a Mr. Cody Thompson. Thank you, sir. We have a speaker's request from, uh, J. Smith.
JR Smith?
JR Smith, I'm sorry. He used to be my postman on Little Fossil, Little Fossil Creek. Would you state your name and address, please, for the record?
I'm JR Smith, or James Ray Smith, or Jim Smith, depends on where I am. But, uh, I wanna say, won't cover three subjects right quick. I'm not gonna elaborate. Uh, first of all, I would like to thank the city for the flashing red light on Baltimore. That has done more good than anything the city has ever done, and we fought for that for thirty-five years. And I'm not gonna get into the senior citizens thing, but I am a senior citizen, and I want to thank the Halton City for what they've done for the senior citizens. Now, y'all can do what you want to with the rest of it, but I thank you for that. And I would like to know why all the hate in Halton City. I go to the store, "Are you ashamed to live in Halton City?" I am not ashamed to live in Halton City. We have no troubles. It's not somewhere else. We don't need a recall election every thirty days. The majority of the people elected y'all. I voted against some of you, and I voted for the rest. But the seniors, the people should back y'all to the hilt. And this is what upsets me. It's somebody stirring the pot that's causing a lot of trouble and hard feelings. And as far as the Star Telegram and their reporters, they can stuff it. They don't like Halton City. Stay out of it. I'm, I'm proud to be here. I carried mail here twenty-one and a half years, and I knew just about everybody in the city. So there's some mighty fine people here, and there are some that's not so fine. I probably fall... I probably fall in the not so fine group. But still, I have lived from Wichita Falls to El Paso, and about the last fifty-one years, I've often owned in Halton City. I worked in an oil field, and I followed the trade. I worked as a carpenter and followed the trade. Then I went to work for a postman and settled there in Halton City. And I have enjoyed living here, and I appreciate what you're doing. And if you're worrying about high taxes, go to Palopena County, baby. They'll take care of them. When the legislature passed the law, you could go raise a tax to the full evaluation. They tripled the evaluation of my place up there. I had to give it to my son, 'cause he can pay the bills, I can't. So, what I'm saying is, you guys have done a fantastic job, as far as I'm concerned. In the streets, we used to be the pothole center of the world, but you're building some good streets now. You're laying a good foundation for them and everything else. And I don't come to these meetings very often, but a lot of people are complaining about the Little Fossil Creek up there. And through my building experience and whatnot, uh, you can stand on the corner of Beach and Broadway and look to the west, northwest, and north, and all that water, and all that concrete that's been poured up there, that that water can't go in the ground, hits Little Fossil. And a cubic foot of water, believe it or not, I went to school one time, weighs, I believe, sixty-two pounds. So a yard would weigh as much as a small automobile. And you cannot put anything in there unless it's concrete and pier holes every eight feet and hold it, because it's gonna wash out. You cannot plant grass, you can't plant trees, 'cause you can go out in the country and see trees sixty years old that's been washed down during a flood.
Excuse me, Ms. Smith, you've got ten seconds, finish up.
We do have floods here, and I saw it one day when I come in. I couldn't get back to the post office. The water was over the bridges of Halton Road in Phoenix. And I thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Next speaker's request we have is from Harliss Allison at 5105 Catalpa, speaking on the halfway house. If you'd give your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Harliss Allison, 5105 Catalpa. I just heard about this halfway house here recently. I was not informed directly, because I'm not involved in politics. But, I do have a statement to say about it. I know it's not on the agenda, but I do have a statement to say about it. I live just off of Halton Road, the south end, down near 121. I have grandchildren of my own. I worry about them being kidnapped, just like you see on television. It's a big problem. I don't know how to control it, because I'm not in law enforcement. But, I do know that if the house is put in down there, the people will be hanging out at the Citco and at the Chevron Station down there, and that's right across the street from my house. And I can't watch my children or grandkids twenty-four hours a day. I would prefer it not be put in my neighborhood. If you really want a halfway house put in, put it in your own neighborhood, not mine, please. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next speaker's request card is from Don Van Dever, 4901 Airport Freeway, rezoning of 4909 Airport Freeway. You've got five minutes, sir.
My name is Don Van Dever. I'm the owner of Vantex Company. My place is at 4901 Airport Freeway. We've been down there for over twenty-one years. We've been in Halton City for over thirty years. I feel more strongly than he does about the halfway house being next door to me. I, I don't have a real good argument that would say, yes, this is the reason it's not. But to me, I use a little allegory, I mean analogy, so to speak. If y'all gave me permission to, to build a chicken house down there to raise chickens twenty years ago, and I've been doing that, and all of a sudden now you want us to consider changing the zoning completely for a commercial building down there, to put in a halfway house to house supposedly reformed foxes that, and we need to take y'all's word for it, that those foxes are not gonna eat our chickens. Now, our business down there, when we first put it in, we didn't have any problems at all. Over the years, things have deteriorated, and, and we have daylight robberies in our parking lots that we had to try to prevent all the time. We realize that y'all can't do anything about it, because they happen so fast. And they're, it's a, it's a sad situation. We have to lock our front door now, at this point, on the, on our office, to protect the young ladies that work in our office, to keep people from walking in, they're undesirable. We have to keep a firearm at the front sales counter and mace. We have people all the time that are, that we catch trying to, uh, fix our burglar alarms by sticking pins through the wires and this and that and the other, and asking to use the restroom, so they can come in and see what we have, whether it's worth stealing or not. Now, with a situation like that, I feel like that we, as a company down there, need a little bit of consideration, the fact that, uh, over the period of time, we generate in excess of a million dollars a year in taxes, and we pay sales taxes on regards to that, not counting property taxes or anything else. I think that, uh, that the millions of dollars that we paid in over the years in, in sales taxes, uh, requires a little bit of consideration. I think that, uh, even considering a halfway house would, uh, destroy the stability and the tranquility of a, a business and residential community down there that, uh, that, that has been in place for a long time. We have no problems down there to speak of, uh, other than deterioration of, of the area. But, I really know, I know that y'all are not the zoning commission, but any opportunity that we have to present this before the, the people to be involved in making this decision, we would like your consideration. Put it this way, if I were to build a new building today, I would not even come close to considering building one next to a half, a federal prison halfway house. And, uh, I thank you for your time. I'll be back here tomorrow night for the zoning commission, but I would like your consideration this matter. Thank you.
The next speaker's request card is from Terry Fogley, 5033 Catalpa Street, on the federal halfway house.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council, ladies and gentlemen in the audience and our, our people who are viewing on TV. I am a mom, a stay-at-home mom with three children. I brought my children this evening. I just recently heard about this federal halfway house, and I'm very concerned about it being close to my neighborhood. There is a school, an elementary school that my children go to, that would be about a half a mile from where they want to put this halfway house at. There are lots of children I know that walk back and forth to school. This concerns me, because, um, to my understanding, these people, uh, would be going to jobs during the day, and whether, if they have a car, then, you know, they can use that for transportation. But what if they don't have a car? They have to use public transportation. The closest public transportation that I'm aware of is located on Beach, okay? So they're gonna have to walk from Menace to Beach to catch a bus. That's exactly where our schoolchildren walk. And so this concerns me a lot about the safety of these children. Uh, and there's elementary age, middle school, and high school kids that all walk that direction to school, back and forth to school every day. It also concerns me about increasing crime in our neighborhood. Uh, I've lived in that neighborhood since nineteen sixty-eight. I grew up there, and I'm raising my family there. It's always been a quiet little community. We're not wealthy, but we hold our own. And I don't, I don't want petty crime in our neighborhood, and I'm sure that y'all don't want that either. But, um, you know, we have widows living on our block, we have, um, senior citizens, we have couples just trying to raise families in a good environment. And it concerns me about our safety. It also concerns me about my property value. Uh, you know, I'm very concerned about the safety, but I'm also concerned about, uh, what it's gonna do to my property value, which I'm sure would decrease, 'cause not very many people would want to live close to a federal halfway house. Our community does its part in community service. They're on Halton Road in Catalpa. We have, um, uh, an association for retarded citizens there, and we never have had a problem with them being there. So it's not that we don't want to do our part in the community, we do. But I don't feel that this federal halfway house is, should be our contribution to the community. I'm also concerned about what it's gonna present our neighborhood to look like to others driving through Halton City. You know, we're not a new part of Halton City to begin with. The city's doing a good job of renovating buildings through there, because they're older buildings. But if I drove through a neighborhood and saw a federal housing facility, I, I would think it wouldn't be a very good place to be around. I wouldn't want to live there, much less spend much, you know, much time there. So, all these matters concern me, and, um, like the gentleman before me, I just heard about this, so I didn't come very well prepared to speak, but I felt like I needed to say something, um, as a citizen of Halton City and as a mother. So I appreciate your time and listening to me, and I don't believe I said my name and address. My name is Terry Fagley, and I live at 5033 Catalpa, here in Halton City. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next and last speaker's request card is from a Judy Palomo, on the halfway house. If you'd give us your name and address for the record, please, ma'am, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Judy Palomo. I live at thirteen fourteen Maxine Street. I'm one of the four people who was notified about this, as I live within two hundred yards of that facility. Um, I'm not a public speaker, so you'll just have to deal with me. I'm, I'm worried about the crime rate. Some people I've talked to think this is a white-collar crime. It's still crime. And I do believe that it's not just all white-collar. Our neighborhoods were not designed for this type of facility. They're not good for the growth of any neighborhood, and they're not good for our youth, and our youth are our future. I have petitions to, against this. If anyone's interested, I'll have them after the meeting. I'm worried about the recidivism rate of the people in this facility. I'm also concerned, I've seen a facility like this on Henderson Street, but there seems to be more security there than it would be available at this facility, this location. I also agree with Mr. Smith. I believe Halton City is a great place to live. We've lived here for over twenty years, never been here before, never had any reason to be concerned about this. Uh, I would appreciate any help or any contributions y'all can make towards this not happening. Thank you.
Did you have a question? Ma'am, would you, would you wait just a second? Councilman Fowler may have a question for you.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't have a question for you. I was just gonna, it had been previously mentioned that tomorrow night is the planning and zoning hearing on this item, and our planning and zoning director, Mr. James Pliskas, here, and I'd like to encourage y'all, it's very important that, uh, they're a group of citizens that, uh, decide the planning and zoning and send it to the council, their recommendative body, and, and it would be good for y'all to have your input and take time to come to that meeting tomorrow night also. It's, you know, this is important, but they, they send a recommendation to us, and we consider it, but that would be the best place to start, would be right there. And Mr. Pliskas might could give some comments on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, city council members. Yes, we will hear this as a public hearing tomorrow night, here in the council chambers at seven-thirty, and we encourage all the citizenry that is involved or affected by this to show up for the public hearing. They'll have the, this is for a conditional use permit. It is not a zoning change, but a conditional use permit, and that is required in our zoning ordinance for this type of facility, so that the citizenry that is living close or affected by this can then participate in this decision-making process. Again, it's not a zoning change, but a conditional use permit that is required for this type of facility to open up in this zoning district.
Let me ask you a quick question. It's assuming the firm that's asking for this will have representatives there at this meeting tomorrow night.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, they will answer questions of the citizenry. They, I believe they've also had, been trying to have meetings with the citizenry as well to explain this type of situation, and evidently they haven't. So, yes, they will have, uh, representatives there, and it is very important to ask these very important questions for this type of facility to be located in this area.
Thank you, Mr. Pliskas.
Thank you, ma'am.
That concludes our Visitors and Citizens Forum. Unless, we have any more? Next on the agenda is the announcements. I think Bobby Arthur has some, two or three announcements she needs to make.
Okay, we're gonna do this. I've been invited to speak tonight on two separate, um, events that are gonna be at the senior center. One is, we'd like to invite any and all of you to the senior center tomorrow, as we recognize our vendors. At eleven o'clock, we will do Posting of Colors by the Halton City Junior ROTC. Um, our mayor will be there to do an invocation. We will do a proclamation. And then the VFW will be doing a missing man table and honor ceremony. So, we would like to encourage any and all of you to come to that. The other thing is, do all of you have one of these? I brought them with you, with me for tonight. MedStar ambulance service presentation, Thursday at the senior center at eleven o'clock. For fifty-five dollars annually, it covers your entire household. Unlimited transports to the hospital, no out-of-pocket expenses. You read the membership agreement, sign the application, return it to MedStar, and in four to six weeks, you will get a membership card in the mail.
Thank you. Thank you, Bobby.
Mr. Mayor, would these MedStar, uh, information, Ms. Arthur might be able to answer real quick, is this gonna be available not only in, at seniors, but then it, will they be available at city hall or any other public facilities?
We can do that, I know. Yeah, they've got a whole second, we can do that, sure.
Put some at the library, maybe some at city hall, so if someone's watching and they don't know where the seniors is at, they could come to city hall and pick up the information.
Sure, we'll ask them.
And this is, this is what we'd previously mentioned, this is a good opportunity for our citizens to, to, to do something that, uh, would save them a great deal of money and give them good protection.
Well, I think in the front page, um, I thought MedStar membership was for seniors. My family's healthy, active, always on the go. One day I made that call to nine-one-one. MedStar was there for us, but our family wasn't a MedStar member. The bill for one transport was over six hundred dollars. Insurance paid some of it, but we had to make up the difference. With our kids so involved in sports and school, the fifty-five dollar annual membership is a bargain for the whole family.
And that covers the whole family? And that covers the whole family.
The whole family.
Thank you.
I have used it for the last eight years, and it's very well worthwhile. It's helped me a lot. We've reached the point now to where we need to take a break, and we will meet back here
Introduce number 12, so that we can just go ahead and do, so I can just go ahead and do the motion.
Okay.
The way we talked about. So he was gonna do that, so she'd read it into the minutes and we wouldn't confuse the motion. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Have you got the motion? Council come to order now, we'll pursue the rest of our agenda. All the announcements are over. Next item is 10, but we're gonna skip down and pick up 11. No, no, I'm sorry. We're gonna pick up 12, which is KB Holmes. We'll speed the process up a little bit.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, citizens of Halton City and city council. This is the second reading of this ordinance, and it's ordinance number O-2003-02915. Consideration and/or action on ordinance number O-2002-03215, amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city of Halton City, Texas for a zoning change from Steve McGee on behalf of KB Holmes for the zoning change request from the MF1 and MF2 multifamily residential district to the PDSF planned development single-family residential district on lots 1, 2, and 3, Block 1, and lots 5, 6, and 7, Block 2 of the Spring Lake Park addition, containing approximately 24.76 acres of land located in the area surrounded by the Texas Pacific Railroad tracks and proposed Westgate Boulevard just south of Loop 820, located in the 5100 block of Spring Lake Parkway, 5,000 block of Halton Road, and the 5,200 block of the proposed Wesgrove Boulevard. This is the second reading of this ordinance, however, tonight we're bringing you as another item instead of the consent agenda item, and I believe Mr. Muir will have some comments on this item.
Yes. I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. I'm sorry. The, the second reading has been put on this part of the agenda mainly because of some misunderstanding on, on staff's part, or more specifically on my part. The, excuse me, the motion that was originally made, excuse me, at the last meeting had, mainly made was conditions based on the traffic patterns that we're gonna be going through the, through the development. That is not the time or place to deal with that, and that's, that was brought to our attention. We're, I think Ms. Branson's gonna have a different motion for that, and to the, Mr. McGee and Mr. Henkel, I appreciate your perseverance through this and sitting here till 9:15 tonight, but I appreciate your indulgence there. And with that, I'll give it back to the chair.
Chair, entertain a motion. Councilman Branson.
Thank you. I move that we approve ordinance number O-2003-02915, Z-00603, as originally presented.
Do we have a second?
You do, second.
Councilman Sutton, second. Would you display your votes, please? The vote is six in favor and one abstain. Mr. Fowler abstaining.
Thank you very much, Mayor Cusman. Thank you very much. This is the city manager, thank you.
Thank you again. Appreciate the statement.
Next item on the agenda, we'll go back to item 10 to pick up.
No. I'm sorry. 10, 10 was done on the consent.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
We're actually ready to go to, uh, boards and commissions.
How about 11?
Oh, 11. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Part of confusion, we, we didn't communicate too well before the mayor left. Item number 11, it's ordinance number 02003-036-01. Consideration and action regarding approval of ordinance 2003-03601, calling for special election to be held on February the 7th, 2004, for the purpose of submitting charter amendments to the voters. First reading. Chair, entertain a motion. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Let me back up. We have some speakers' request cards. The first one is Mike Stewart on proposed charter election.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, for allowing me to speak on this item. My name is Mike Stewart. I live at 3521 Larry Street here in Halton City. In early August, a charter review committee comprised of eight citizens who had never served on any committee, board, or similar entity in Halton City, and who had no ties to any city council member or to the mayor, presented its recommended, recommended changes to the council. You've reviewed their recommendations and deleted only two of the changes they proposed. This is the first reading of this ordinance to schedule an election for February 7th, 2004, to allow the voters to speak their mind. I'd like to ask that before you vote on this ordinance, you consider the following. The charter review committee recommended increasing from two to three years the term a council member may serve before running for reelection. This recommendation was made because, since the committee members were aware that a new council member typically takes from eight to 12 months to reach a point where he or she truly becomes an active, productive member of the council, then three to four months before the end of his or her term, he's out campaigning for reelection. With two-year terms, he really has less than one year, maybe up to a year, to serve the city in its full capacity. If allowed to serve for three years, he could concentrate on the business of the city for two full years or longer. That was the reason the committee recommended this change, but I understand you've chosen not to place this item on the ballot in February. At the same time, they made a recommendation to do away with term limits, and I understand that you are placing that item on the ballot for consideration by the voters. I want to strongly urge you to reconsider your decision on these two items. My personal opinion is that voters will approve three-year terms. However, if you put forward a recommendation to do away with term limits, which incidentally was overwhelmingly voted down in the last charter election by a majority of the voters, it may create a backlash that could cause citizens to vote down the entire slate of proposed changes. I know that you're aware that several of these changes are to make our charter conform to new or revised state law. If the, the whole charter is voted down, as I suspect it may be, parts of the charter will be in conflict with state law until it can be reviewed again, and it's my understanding the very earliest that could be would be in 2005. And I also know you're aware of the current mood of a lot of citizens in our city right now, and with this in mind, I'd like to just urge you one more time to reconsider these two issues before you vote on this ordinance tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
If you'd stand by a minute. Mr. Fowler?
I have a quick question for Mr. Stewart. Mr. Stewart, you were my appointee on the Charter Review Commission, and we don't always agree, and sometimes we do agree politically, but it's been stated that, that we don't need to spend the money on the charter election and so on and so forth thrown about. In your honest opinion, and I know that I, I feel very comfortable about, I served on the last charter review towards the tail end of it, and it was quite a bit of chaos on there because there were 16 members. This time, we changed the criteria of what the board was made up of, or the panel was made up of. Eight very good individuals that I feel, you know, very, very strongly about, that they were capable of making good decisions and had good debate, and y'all, and I attended one meeting, and y'all had very good, open and fair debate. That being the case, do you feel like that we need to proceed with this charter election? Do you, and what's your?
Very definitely.
So you feel very strongly that?
Yes, I do.
That we need to move forward with it as an entire council and, and update the document, or put it before the voters to have the opportunity to update the document?
Right, and that's my concern about you're putting forth the no-term limits and not putting forth the three-year terms, because I think most voters would probably agree that a council member needs three full years. Otherwise, it's just like Councilmember Sutton and Branson. They were elected in May, here it is November, and they're really just getting their feet wet and getting into the swing of what they need to be doing. And what, you know, a year from now, you're gonna be campaigning for reelection. So how much time do you get to actually do the business of the city? And I am not necessarily against not having term limits, but I think with the mood of the city in relation to what's happened here in the last two or three months, I, my concern is that the whole charter will be voted down, and the time we spent from March until late July working on that with Acting City Manager Tom Muir, Brenda Staub, our city secretary, sitting in on every meeting, council members showed up at some of those meetings, our city attorney's representative spent countless hours at $250 an hour answering questions for us. I don't wanna see that all thrown down the tubes.
Well, and I, and I wanna thank y'all for the, for the time y'all put forth, and I just want the people to understand that this was a body made up of not a, it wasn't a bunch of political puppets or anything else, because like I previously stated, you and I don't always agree, but you were my appointment, and that was the reason that I asked you to serve on that board, because then it would be a fair document, and y'all did view the document from cover to cover.
We did.
And, and spent a lot of time on it, and I wanna thank y'all for, for the efforts y'all all made. There was a couple of other members here earlier tonight, and, and, you know, y'all put a lot of effort forth, and if you really feel like it's something that we need to, to pursue, then I, you know, I do also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Williams, do you have a question?
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments for Mr. Stewart. First of all, I think the, the comments about our colleagues up here just now getting the swing of things, getting their feet wet. There's an opportunity for people that wanna run and wanna serve, and there's a person in this audience tonight that I understand is, is looking toward running next May, and I admire this person for coming to all the meetings and all. It's the same thing I did when I got involved. I didn't just come up six, eight weeks before election and decide that I wanted to run. I took time. I went to the meetings, and so by the time I did get elected, I would say that I was seasoned in sitting in these meetings back here, just like you. You've been, what, two, three years coming back there sitting? Every year. And so, someone that's knowledgeable like that, I think it's unfair to say that they're not, you know, you're not gonna come in and, and be 100% right away, but if you do the proper footwork to get there, you will. And with the three-year terms, I think we could probably deal away with some recall elections, because that would give you an extra year to get mad at somebody to recall them. And so if you left that at two years, now, if this thing is promoted properly by the council, by the mayor, by the board that did this, and different boards within the city, public leaders, if the importance of this is stated, I think that people in Halton City are intelligent enough to vote for what they feel is right and vote down what they think is wrong, term limits. You know, they were put in a few years back to get rid of a judge that they couldn't vote out, and that's, that's what you do. If you get somebody that you can't vote out, you put term limits in. Doesn't mean that that person is bad. It just means that it's a way, if you can't beat them at the polls, you turn them. The President of the United States, what, two terms, four years, or eight years?
Two four-year terms.
Yeah, two four-year terms. You know, and he's out. He can't run again.
And I'm not saying, I hope these two council members didn't misunderstand, I'm not saying that they are not intelligent enough to pick up what they need. I'm just saying that I personally feel like three years would give them a better chance to serve the city in, in a full capacity. As far as term limits, at this point, I'm not going to say whether I'm for or against. I'm just saying I'm concerned with the atmosphere in our city right now, that it may cause problems with the entire charter.
Part of the atmosphere in the city is worried that I'm gonna run again in May, and I'm not going to, so they won't have, it's.
It's not just you, there's, there's seven of them.
I'll sign, well, a lot of these guys still have another term after this time, though. But I, I would like to clarify one other thing. I, I would like to thank you and, and the committee and all the hours that y'all spent and staff. This isn't the most interesting piece of work to be working with.
That's for sure.
But I would like to clarify, you said we were paying the attorney $250 an hour. Are we getting a rebate on that, Mr. Olson, or is that actually what it was gonna cost?
Absolutely. You get a rebate on, on a lot of that.
It's like a buck thirty-five.
Did put in a number of hours on this. Our rate's $150 an hour, but we put in a lot of hours, but we also, we avoided attending meetings until we were needed there because of the, the concern over costs, and we have given our input to make sure that the charter propositions are legally worded if the council does vote to send these for an election, and I think we've had sufficient involvement in this, and, but we, we've tried to limit our involvement because of the, the cost that is expensive to bring attorneys into it, but unfortunately, when you amend the charter, there are a lot of legal issues involved there, and we had to have some input in it.
And we sought a lot of legal advice on some issues that we just did not know what to do with. Appreciate your staff.
One other question, Mr. Stewart. On the, on the three-year term, did y'all, do you know how the vote was on that, in the vote on the term limits?
Not offhand.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time. Thanks for staying.
Councilman Sutton.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to reiterate, along with my other councilmen, appreciation for what you and the committee have done in producing this document. I noticed that a lot of these, in fact, most of them are preemptive for a situation that may arise in the city in, in years to come. For instance, the, the right-of-way's and, and the ability of the city to negotiate with different telecommunications companies, things like that. And so what we're looking at is, is a document that is filled with some good things that will benefit Halton City in the future. What I understand is there's a very small amount that really are applicable to a conflict with state law, and could you, for the, for our audience that's watching, tell us how many of these 16 amendments that we now have approved to go to the charter amendment are actually in violation of state law?
Ah, I may have to defer to our acting city manager, but if you'll give me a moment to scan this document, the, the one that you mentioned about public right-of-way's, that was one that was recommended to us by the legal staff. That was pretty much to clarify the city's, you know.
Right, but it wasn't a violation of state law at that point, no. So what, what were the ones that were actually a violation of state law?
Not necessarily a violation, it's just state law has changed, and in order to bring this charter into compliance with new or revised state law.
Good way to say it.
We recommended the changes. Tom, are you aware of any off the top of your head?
The answer is three.
There are some. I, out of the 16, I'd probably say a quarter to a third of them.
Now, I mean, there's a specific number that I'm looking for that was talked about in the pre-council session.
Um, I don't recall that.
Does our council know?
I don't recall that number.
Okay. From, let me bring this to a close. There were three of these, of the 16, that needed to be broadened to conform them with state law as we got counsel in the workshop session. So I just wanted to bring that out to the people of the city that, that that's the sense of urgency we're talking about, three of them. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion by the council members?
Uh, no.
Okay. Chair, entertain a vote, a motion. Councilman Branson?
Well, this isn't for the motion. I just wanna explain my vote before I vote for it. I appreciate all the work that everyone did, however, due to the costs involved in the charter election, and I know there's a number given in our notebook, but I'm not convinced that's the total number. I think maybe the attorney fees for preparing the documents and that sort of thing are not included. I will be voting no on the February date, because I believe our citizens could deal with this at the May election, when we'll be having May elections.
Thank you. Councilman Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to also state my reasons for why I will be voting no against this is I believe that there's some very good things in here that could be. that there's some very good things in here that could be best handled, and I've already stated this, in the May election. I believe that's whenever we'll have the most people out to vote on something, and I'm a firm believer that you need the most people out to vote on something as significant as a charter change. And I realize that there are some people that have the opinion that only a few people should go to a charter election, the ones that are concerned about their city, but I have a, a philosophical disagreement with that. I believe that whenever we're changing our charter, we need to hear from everybody in the city. And so, I feel like May would be a better place to have this election, hold this election. So, I'm going to be voting against the February date, but there are many issues in here, in fact, most of them I agree with and think that they should be put by the voters.
Councilman Williams, and then Fowler.
Yes, I've got a, I've got a very valid point, I think. If the rumor's going around town, and I think it was Mr. Stewart while he was talking about the, the tempo of the town, or the mood that the town was in right now, if, if there's going to be a recall election in February, I guess the question would be to the city, or councillor, or the attorney, would it cost any more to have it in February than it would in May if there was a recall election in February?
You're probably asking the wrong person to quantify what it will cost, but I'm, I'm sure that there will be minimal cost above and beyond what would be incurred for the recall election itself.
What could I ask? If this, if the recall election is, is called, could you have this on the agenda for the same night it is, and you could have them together and save the city money? Be a uniform election date in February, but I mean, if, we're going to have to have a deadline if there is.
Yeah, there's a couple of issues. The, the charter election needs to be called by ordinance. State law requires that you call it by ordinance, and that takes two readings. And as we discussed in pre-council, you need to have your second reading prior to December 5th, because there's a 62-day requirement to call the election. If a recall election is required, then there are provisions in your charter that dictate when you must call the recall election, depending upon when the petitions are received. And again, that has to be called 62 days in, in advance of a uniform election date. But it is called by resolution, not ordinance, and only takes one vote to call that election. So, that there are timing issues on that that could come into play. My recommendation is, if, if you think that you want to hold the charter election on the February 7th election date, that you need to state that in your motion tonight. And if you want to extend it on second reading to the May election date, you could do so at that point in time.
Well, I think it would be the advantage of the city if there is going to be a recall election. Mr. Councilmember Sutton said that it's, would be better if we got more people to vote. Now, we had a former mayor that said that it would be better, the fewer the people that voted, the smarter they were about it, but I, I kind of agree, the more people vote, the more output, input you would have. And so, if there is going to be a recall election, I would like to save the city money and have the charter election at the same time. But, you know.
Mr. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to move for approval of ordinance number 0-2003-036-01 on first reading for, to hold the February 7th, 2004, for a charter, charter election. And I'd also like to ask if we could ask our interim manager if he would, he went to a class that dealt with charter elections, if you could, you'd, you'd made mention of this earlier, the importance of having charter elections as standalone elections.
That's, that's right. The, at the TML conference last year, the, several cities presented their cases in how they handled their charter elections, and the first rule that all of them said is to have it as a standalone, because it, while it's, ideally you want to get a lot of people out to vote, it gets politicized, and instead of dealing with the, the face of the issues, that was the, the, the facts that they gave as far as the feedback that they got from, these are cities that have tried them both ways. I'd say it can't be done or can't be successful, but as far as for it being successful, they recommended a standalone election.
And do that, February 7th currently is our, is would be a standalone election as it stands right now, is that not correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Therefore, I move the motion.
Have a motion, do we have a second? Councilman Williams?
Second's motion.
Have a motion and a second? Indicate your vote. That's five, four, and two against. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is boards and commissions. Item 14, resignations of board members. Consideration and/or action regarding approval of resignations of board and commission members. Do we have any resignations? Do we have any appointments, or re-appointments? No appointments. Next item is excused absence of council members. Item 16, attendance requirements. Consideration and/or action regarding excused absences of council members according to Article 3, Section 3.07-A, attendant's requirements of the Haltem City Charter. Someone want to make a motion to excuse the mayor? I've got three lights on, I don't know who was first. Moved approved his absence.
Sitting in light of the mayor went home with a headache and a backache, I would like to pray for his well-being and also excuse him for the meeting.
All right. Do you have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes, sir.
And the vote is unanimous. Next, we come to item 17, executive session. Section 551.071, consultation with city attorney pertaining to any matter in which the duty of the city attorney under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct may conflict with the Open Meetings Act, including discussion of any item posted on the agenda, open meetings, city computer, emails, official newspaper, eight-liners, escrow agreement, and North Texas Land Development Company, and litigation, settlements, offers, and claims for the following cases. And that will be B&amp;H Utilities, City of Haltem City versus Gahan Holmes, Celestine De Leon, complaint filed with Ethics Commission, Jane Doe versus City of Haltem City, and City of Haltem City versus Public Associates. We will now adjourn to the executive session at 9:40.